I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone on this summer day. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, do you have any comments? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay.
Mr. Allen, did you get that?
Yes, aye.
Awesome. All right, we'll head right on into the superintendent's report.
Thank you President Dome. I wanted to take this time to acknowledge our change in leadership. As this is my first meeting as our district's acting superintendent, as we conveyed in our communication this week, we acknowledged that the last several months have been difficult with a range of emotions involved. But we acknowledge that we are up for the challenge before us to push into the future together. Our responsibility to forge our path forward is an honor, and it's one that holds the highest importance because it's for all the students and families we serve. With that, our students start school on August 14th, and we are focused on preparing for our start of the 2019-20 school year and welcoming students and families then. I look forward to working with our students, staff, and community to usher in the start of our new year. Thank you.
Thank you. We will head on down to 4.01 with the comments from the public.
Madam President, at this time, per policy BF, I did notify all board members earlier this week on Tuesday of my intention to suspend policy BDDH to allow for extended comment to make sure anyone who wanted to speak tonight was heard. All the board members know that we are extending time tonight, but it will not be unlimited. As a result, I do move to suspend policy BDDH to allow speakers three minutes of time tonight to address the board for a total not to exceed one hour of public comment tonight. I don't think we're going to reach that time, but just in case.
I'll second the motion, and I have a point of information request from the board secretary. Do we know how many people are signed up? Do you have the list?
We have 12.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The parliamentarian have something to read there? Thank you.
Yes. Board policy BDDH allows for a period of public comment during regular meetings of the Board of Education. Tonight, the board is allocating up to 60 minutes for the comments, and no individual speaker may speak more than three minutes. Comments must be limited to items that directly pertain to the school district. If several speakers wish to address the same subject and make essentially the same point, the board president may allow only one or two people to speak on behalf of all the persons. Or if a speaker intends to make a point that a previous speaker has made, it will be sufficient for the latter speaker to simply notify the board that he or she is in agreement with the views of a previous speaker. Board policy BDDH also prohibits discussion about individual faculty, staff, or students during the public comment part of the meeting. If a member of the public wishes to comment about one of these people, there is a link on the district's website under the School Board, Board Members tab, in which a message can be sent to any or all of the board members. I can assure you that the board members read any messages they receive through this means. Our board attorney believes that restricting comments about individual faculty, staff, and students through this method is in a reasonable way to balance your right to contact board members with the rights of the individual employees or students of the district, and affords members of the public with reasonable alternative way for concerns to be expressed to the board. We recognize that at this meeting, some of you may want to comment about a recent announcement about an agreement between the board and the superintendent. If you wish to criticize or praise the board or members of the board over this agreement or over anything else the board has done, you are free to do so. But we must ask that you do not make personal comments pro or con about the superintendent. The agreement that has been announced is technically not yet effective, so the superintendent is still considered an employee of the school district. As always, profane language or comments that constitute a threat to the safety of others are prohibited. And finally, board members will not engage in debates or discussions with those who speak beyond asking questions to get clarification about a comment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. First up is Erica Wilson, then Lynn Hinkle, and then Michael Shaw.
Good evening, board members. I'd like to take a moment to publicly acknowledge what an exceptional leader we had in our former superintendent. His exit from this district is a huge loss for many of us because we had a really courageous champion for marginalized children and families while he was here. And a professional human being who took the assignment he was given and really carried it out with courage and determination. I just want to publicly note the work that he did to ensure that the children and families of this district could have the equitable education they deserve, and that the teachers could have the support that they need to be the best teachers that they all want to be. As we look forward, I can't help but feel that we owe it, all of us owe it to our children, and we owe it to him to get this equity thing right. I appreciate that the board has emphasized as recently as this week that it remains committed to the work of our approved equity plan and the components of the plan. And as you go on to carry out this very critical work, I want you to know that it's not enough to identify as not racist. You have to be actively and intentionally doing the work against the things that oppress, dehumanize, and marginalize the children and families of LSR 7, or your work means nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Hinkle? All right, we'll move down to Michael Shaw.
Good evening. I definitely want to echo Ms. Wilson's words. She's far more kinder than I might have been. But what I will say is that I'm concerned about the safety and the welfare of our children with all the stuff that has been going on in our community. To hear children talk about the issues that grown adults can't get right, that we're placing on their feet, is a little discerning. Our community is deeply divided. Our district is deeply divided by actions of this group. Not exclusive of you, it's inclusive of everyone in the room. At some point, we have to do what's in the best interest of the children. It's not okay to not do the work of equity that needs to be done. Our voices have been marginalized long enough, and at some point, and I hope that is today, you've made some decisions that you believe are in the best interest of this community. We may not agree with that. We want to be at the table and not on the menu. So as we go forward, all that I ask is that as an African-American parent of this community for 19 years, I want our voices to be heard in decisions made about how you teach our children. It is not okay to let the fox guard the hen house, so to speak. If we knew what these situations were and we could address them, then we should have done it. We should never be in the situation that we're in. So therefore, please allow the African-American parents to be engaged and involved in how this program works. We don't want to be shut out. We want to be included. If we look at this room today, the very fact that the staff is not on the dais is a part of that not being included. We once were included, now we're not included. Have us included. Have us included. Have us included. Thank you.
Thank you. Courtney Ray.
Good evening, school board members, acting superintendent Dr. Miller, community members and parents. My name is Courtney Ray. This is Mia, my soon-to-be eighth grader at Summit Lakes, and this is Carter, my soon-to-be third grader at Woodland. Let me ask you a question. What do you see when you look at them? Do you see children that probably qualify for the free or reduced lunch program? Do you see children that may be troublemakers in their classrooms? Do you see children that are probably pulling the test scores down? Do you see children that probably come from a single-parent home? Do you see my black son as a black man? Do you see my black daughter as a loud and ghetto little girl? I'm not sure what you see when you look at them, but I want to share with you what I see when I look at them. I see two beautiful black children created by God for a special purpose. I see two beautiful black children that are powerful, loving, compassionate, intelligent, polite, courageous, resilient, humble, honest, and fearless. I see two beautiful black children who are respectful, kind, curious, hopeful, and optimistic about their future. I see two beautiful black children who are critical and creative thinkers. I see two beautiful black children who are leaders and have a voice, a voice that deserves to be heard. I see two beautiful black children that have questioned their worth and individual identities due to the thoughts, views, and implicit biases of others. Those others being their peers, community members, and a few of their teachers. I see two beautiful black children who deserve an equitable education right here in Lee Summit, Missouri, and should not be told to go find another school district if this one is not meeting their needs. These are my children, my whole heart, my whole world. And just like you and all parents in this room, we only want the best for them. Regardless of who is sitting in that superintendent's seat, these two beautiful black children deserve the best. They deserve to have their individual needs met and to feel welcomed in every classroom they enter. You owe it to every child in this district to make sure the staff you employ are culturally competent and responsive. That can only be achieved through the work Dr. Carpenter and his team initiated here in this district. The equity work must continue, and we are here for the long haul to ensure that that happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Antonio Block. Antonio Block? Nicole Doxy?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. My name is Nicole Doxy. I am a parent of a freshman entering Lee Summit High School. We have been in the district for six years as we moved from Raymore Elementary. Of all the school districts we researched, we chose Lee Summit R7. With everything going on, and a school board that seems more interested in their own personal agenda rather than what is best for our children, all of our children, my family and others are very saddened by the news about Dr. Carpenter's resignation and buyout at a time such as this. We need the board to put their personal differences aside and put our children's educational needs at the forefront. My hope, even without Dr. Carpenter's leadership, I still hold accountable parents, teachers, professionals, faculty, and the board responsible in executing and immediately moving forward with the equity plan to give all children the quality education they deserve for the school year and thereafter. Thank you.
Thank you. Terrell Davis. Kim Randolph.
Good evening. My name is Kim Randolph. I was a resident of Lee Summit. I'm the president and CEO of the Heartland Black Chamber of Commerce. I'm coming here on behalf of the chamber, our members, and our leadership. It's really hard to stand here in 2019 and have a conversation about equity and inclusion. I went to Ruskin High School in 1976. I was one of 12 black students that graduated in a class of 580. Here we are in 2019 with a board that's talking about inclusion that's exclusive. You can't even begin to understand how that makes us feel. You didn't even try. You didn't even try to work. You made a decision, and you didn't even think about the family and the children that are out here. I came to a meeting and I heard one of the board members compare the transition of Raytown as though this is what's going to happen to Lee Summit. What you need to understand, it is financial. Why is it when the black students come to your districts, you move away and you take down the cost? You spend less money. If there's no money in the school, of course, the curriculum's going to change. That's why Raytown is where it is. It has nothing to do with the students. As leaders, people voted for you and trusted you to do what was right. And in a world right now, the United States is the most divided country in the world, and you continue to divide us. I'm appalled and I'm ashamed, and it's not because of your color. It's because you refuse to do something that could have been historical for you. This could have been your legacy that you lost. So instead, we have to tell our children they're not important again. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Myers. Sarah Myers? Okay. Carla Dial?
Good evening. Picked up the pamphlet on the way in. Happened to notice that two of your commitments were, one was embracing open, honest, two-way communication. I believe that needs some work. Another one was sustaining positive relationships among students, staff, families, and community members. There's a lot of work to be done there. A lot. I don't disagree with anything that's been said here tonight. Not one word. I do, however, feel that this board, and by this board, I'm not specifying individuals, the Lee Summit Board of Education, the last two superintendents that we've had didn't work out for various reasons. We paid an exorbitant amount of money to buy out their contracts. As a taxpayer, that pisses me off. I think this board needs to be very, very careful in who they choose next. I think that they need to do simple Google searches on these people and find out what their backgrounds are. I don't believe that was done last time because there were some pretty amazing things, in the last two, actually. I have never attributed the equity plan to Dr. Carpenter because the equity plan came, the whole idea of it, came from the board prior to his arrival. He was hired in order to implement this plan that the board wanted. And I think the general public of Lee Summit doesn't understand that. However, I also don't believe that this equity plan has been publicized enough to get the general Lee Summit public involved and on board with it. I'm a firm believer in all children deserve a quality education. Period. There should not be different educations for different demographics of children. They should all receive a quality education. Period. Now, if there's some things that need to happen in order for that to happen, that's where I differ. I differ in that it's the school board's purview. It's more in the realm of state social services. That's my personal opinion. However, if the board chooses to take on that responsibility, they're going to need a lot more money to be anywhere near effective. So my time is up, and you'll probably see me again.
Thank you. Chris Jackson?
Hello, everybody. My name is Christopher Jackson. I moved here from Bonner Springs, Kansas. We've been at Lee Summit for only a year, although I've been born and raised in Kansas City, Missouri myself. This has kind of come as a shocker there. I thought that there would be a little difference there, and I'm hoping that I don't see the same that went on in Kansas City, Missouri. You know, in Kansas City, Missouri, the public school system was messed up. You know, and Lee Summit, I've always heard Lee Summit was good, and I'm not saying that it's bad. I'm just saying I always heard that it was good. And with a family, a young family, we moved here in sight to give our children a better life, more diversity, a range of options, and also an opportunity to be the best that they can be. And we hope that that doesn't change. We hope that with the new superintendent that comes in will be that type of person that will be able to implement that. When I look across the board, I don't see anybody that looks like me, you know, and that's tough. You know, and I'm not saying that, you know, you guys are probably bad. I don't know your stories. What I'm saying is when I look around, I looked at most of the people who spoke were people that looked like me, you know, and it seems like that, you know, we constantly are on the bottom trying to find a way out, you know, and that's tough, you know. My daughter, she used to be in third grade, got a son that just graduated high school. He's going off to college, to MU. And we thank God for those opportunities because we made those opportunities. We made those opportunities happen. We pushed our kids to make those opportunities happen. You know, we don't want, you know, we want the fair advantage all across the board. Everybody's equal. You know, I host a radio show in Kansas City, Missouri, and we talk to young kids. We talk to black kids, white kids, Hispanic kids. We try to get them to understand that they are valuable. You know, we work on, you know, technology and STEM and mathematics with them. You know, we try to get them to understand that, you know, you have to be smart, obviously, but then we also understand that we have to have opportunity. And if we don't have the opportunity to be smart, and, I mean, opportunity to do well, then we're still at the bottom of the barrel trying to get a hand up. My kids are mixed. I'm African-American. My wife is Caucasian, you know. So we have those conversations about diversity and things like that. And we have those conversations about just being your best self and knowing what it is to make you a better person inside and out. Thank you.
Thank you. Last one, Rodrick Sparks, last but not least.
I'm going to be a little bit more direct. Still calling for the resignation of the president. We're moving forward. So with Dr. Carpenter, without Dr. Carpenter, we need to move forward. So when I'm as a parent of two children coming from the Blue Valley School District, left a district that was a premium school district in Kansas, wanted to give my children community, wanted them to be closer to their family. And so Lee Summit was the district that we chose. The unfortunate part is we did not know that the conversation that would happen in my house would be about race. The unfortunate part is my teacher did this to me. I have a student daughter that's qualified for the gifted program. Have yet to hear from anyone from the school district to move her into that program. I have had to call someone, and guess what? Had a conversation, have not heard anything else. That's unfortunate, but I also believe that it's because of the color of her skin. I have a second thing. Instead of me getting emails on how well my daughter is doing in spelling, how well she's doing in reading, how she is one of the smartest students in her class, instead I get a phone call that she coloring on her hand. Why is she coloring on her hand? Because you're not challenging her. Why is she not being challenged? Because we don't care about all students. One of the things that I try to encourage my children is care about your neighbor. Care about your neighbor. Care about the person that lives next to you. Care about the person that will come across your paths. And it's unfortunate that there's many students that are coming from different backgrounds that come across your paths, but instead we see smirks. But instead, we see people drinking water and turning their head. It was very unfortunate when I got to see the doctor that made his presentation when he was basically talking about equity. And the same individuals that was elected, now we have to be honest about ourselves. The reason why some of you are here is because we neglected to go to the polls and voted. And that's why you're in these seats. But I'm here to tell you that I'm going to fight to make sure that you're out of these seats. What we have to do is if you're going to sit in these seats, you have to care for every single student that cross your path, regardless of what they look like, regardless of what their background is, regardless of what their economic status is. We are trying to educate every student to be the best that they can be so that they will make an impact in the community that we're trying to build.
Thank you. Thank you all. Board reports and meetings attended. Jackie, would you like to start, please?
Yes, thank you. I think the public knows that we've been pretty busy with our workshop and various closed sessions. I don't note this on the agenda anywhere, but there was some reference made to emails, and we are working through the emails that came in this week that were delayed. So I just wanted to let everybody understand that. And I apologize for not responding earlier. In addition, I've had the opportunity to attend some informal citizen meetings around the topic of equity in the past month, and that's my report.
Thank you. Judy?
I don't have a report since last month. Thank you.
I also do not have a report from last month.
We did have our board retreat June 14th and 17th that we all attended, and actually, I think a few people in the audience actually were there. So you knew some of the things that we talked about at that particular workshop. And then we had finance committee yesterday morning at 7:30 a.m., but Board Member Smith will give that report here in just a second.
All right, thank you. Board Member Fritchie?
Yes, from the Lee Summit Educational Foundation. The foundation funding helps in so many meaningful areas for our students across the district. And July is our kickoff month for the Lee Summit Educational Foundation's annual campaign. They provided campaign materials to R7 administrators at last week's District Leadership Institute, and they're preparing a Friends of the Foundation Community Campaign Blitz for the next several weeks. We always seek 100% participation from the foundation board members, R7 administrators, and from us, the school board members. Gave you each a brochure on that tonight at your seats. And anyone else in the audience who's interested in that, the foundation would love to talk to you. Friends of the Foundation participation brochures, like I said, are at your seats, and we thank you in advance for your partnership and your support for the foundation. One more meeting I attended this past month is the Chamber's Government Relations Committee meeting. They met on June 28th. And at that meeting, we heard updates from our county executive Frank White regarding Jackson County's courthouse renovations, the Rock Island Trail from Lee Summit to Raytown, purchase of land... purchase of land for a new animal shelter in Jackson County, and plans for a new jail and tax assessment. So we had lots of information from our county executive Frank White, and that's my report.
Thank you. Board Member Allen?
I do not have a report this week. It would have been government relations. I was unable to make Team Lee Summit, but will follow up directly with the coordinators of that group.
Great, thank you. All right, on to 6.01, the finance report.
Investments through June total approximately $121.4 million. The revenue and expense report, expense percentages are within expected budget parameters, and the current fund balance for June is 31.76%. A facilities report, construction and maintenance update. The finance committee reviewed updates on the following projects: the Woodland Sewer improvements, middle school track resurfacing, BCMS intercom replacement, Westview Roofery improvements, Lee Summit West retaining wall improvements, and planning for future projects. Woodland Elementary Annexation, as requirement for conveying sewage from Woodland Elementary School to the city of Lee Summit, the school property must be located within the city limits. The committee discussed a voluntary petition for Lee Summit to annex. JLG lift purchase in keeping in compliance with board policy DJF AP1. Facilities is bringing forward an item for equipment purchase that totals $39,942. This is for the purchase of a portable man lift to replace a unit that was deemed unsafe for use. Other things that we talked about, and Dr. Del Sim, as I go through this, the last paragraph, I may need your assistance on this, or last sentence, I should say, dealing with Kelly Services, so make sure that we're... So I'll read it and then I'll, because it's not making... It makes sense to me, but it doesn't make sense when I read it, so. After proposal reviews and scoring, the evaluation team is recommending Kelly Educational Services for the award. Kelly Educational Services bid price for a substitute teacher is $128.95. This is the last sentence here that is going to be misunderstood if we don't get this correct. Our current bid price with Kelly Services is $134 for a teacher substitute, which is a $5.05 lower. So we're not really lowering the substitute pay. Could you? That's what I thought it was, but I needed it from... Oh, thank you. Power School web-based employment management software. Power School is being recommended for all-inclusive employee management system and Spark Hire for the video interviewing software. The Power School web-based employee management software system includes job posting and applicant tracking, a candidate assessment tool, onboarding, employment records, contracts, compensation summaries, and professional learning. Century Industries for portable bleachers. The district has three sets of mobile bleachers for excessive crowds at events we host at the district. There is still a need for additional seating, especially varsity football games. This past year, we had games where the crowd exceeded our stadium capacity. In order to provide a safe environment for fans attending events, the purchase of one portable bleacher is being recommended. Ion Wave Technologies, after extensive research and demonstration, Ion Wave Technology is found to be the most useful and efficient RFP bid system for the district needs. This system will maintain contracts and agreements, expanding sourcing capabilities, and will implement the use of electronic bid evaluations. Prime Vendor U.S. Food Services, in order to obtain competitive pricing for food items and supplies, a single food distributor is being recommended. The district will receive lower fixed margins on all ingredients and supplies. The Prime Vendor agreement will improve overall operation and product consistency. Madam President, I have two actions to be voted on. 6.02, I move to approve the transfer of $11,77,194.08 from the general fund to the special revenue fund.
Second.
All right, do we have any questions, discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
6.03, I move to approve the treasurer's report and payment of the bills.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Great. Thank you, Board Member Smith. Number seven items for decision, the consent agenda. Do we have any questions on 7.01 through 7.08? Can I get a motion? Please.
I move to approve the consent agenda items 7.02 through 7.08.
Second.
Excuse me, I need to add 7.01 in there. That's the minutes.
So 7.01 through 7.08.
Yes, thank you.
Do we have any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Now we're on to item eight. Do I have a motion?
I move that the board ratify the contracts over $5,000 as presented in consent agenda items 8.02 and 8.03.
Thank you. Any discussion? Board Member Murdock?
I do have a couple of questions about 8.02 in terms of our mobile trailers and stuff like that, and I apologize that I didn't ask this question earlier this week. How many trailers do we now have going in the district?
Are you actually asking how many will be moved?
No, I know how many are going to be, because we're moving them over to Trail Ridge and stuff like that, but like, how many trailers, like, kind of in total, do we have? Do we know? I'm sorry, I should have asked that ahead of time. Sorry, Kyle. My bad.
He knows all.
No problem at all, Ryan. We have current active classrooms. We've got, and when I say a trailer, that's two classrooms. We have two trailers at Lee Summit West. We currently have two at Hazel Grove that are being moved, so they'll have none next year. One of those is going to Pleasantly Middle School, and one's going to Trail Ridge Elementary School. And then we have two trailers at Summit Lakes, or, I'm sorry, Summit Point Elementary School. There are a few other trailers around the district used for other purposes, but those are the ones used for classrooms.
Mason and Miller Park Center.
Mason has two trailers. You know, Westview has a trailer. It's not being used for regular ed classrooms. I'll smiley about it. Pleasantly Middle School has another one that's not being used for classrooms. Miller Park has one used for the great program, two used for the great program that are not regular ed classrooms. I'll leave anybody out. Somebody else will remember one.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. On to item nine, or items. Do I have a motion, please?
I move that the board approve new contracts over $5,000 as presented in consent agenda items 9.02 through 9.35.
9.34.
I'm sorry, 34 is correct.
Okay, any discussion? All right, Board Member Murdock?
So I have a question about 9.02 in regards to our ACT contract. As we've progressed throughout, and this is almost nationwide in terms of testing and ACT scores and stuff like that, as there's been some push towards not necessarily weighting the ACTs heavily, while still some obviously use it heavily to enroll kids after high school. My question is, is, you know, we do the ACT without the writing, obviously, for the juniors. What preparation are then we giving for those kids in terms of taking the written exam? Or if they take the writing portion, then let's say as a senior and stuff like that? And was there ever a discussion to try and get them the writing portion as juniors?
Dr. Berger?
So we absolutely did look at the writing portion because when the state provided the assessment at their cost, they did provide the writing portion. Anecdotally, what we found, and having proctored the test in a number of those years, is that a number of the students who knew that the schools that they were not attending, that they were attending, did not require or ask for the writing portion. And the writing portion was the very last section of the test. And so proctoring through that test became difficult for a number of folks who were not interested in that last session of the test, but had to sort of plow through it. That being said, we did look, aside from the issue of proctoring the test, and it is substantially more expensive to give that writing portion, and so that was why at that time the district decided to give the test without the writing portion, since most of our universities that our students are attending are not asking for that writing portion. Each of our high schools are using somewhat different pathway for ACT preparation that they may have contracted with separately. However, Naviance is available at each of our schools and includes that ACT preparation program and may best be spoken to from a secondary perspective because it doesn't run out of the assessment space, but I do know that Naviance runs as a secondary program with a very solid ACT practice and preparation program that's included for our students. Quite honestly, I cannot speak to the instruction specific to that writing portion in that that's not a focus of what we're giving from an ACT assessment section. The question there would really come from maybe the curricular perspective. I would say being familiar with our ELA curriculum, I think the approach that we are taking to writing instruction and the rubrics that our writing instruction has shifted to in terms of spiraled writing rubrics that begin in elementary and spiral all the way through 12th grade would be very solid preparation for any level of writing or technical writing, much like you would see on the ACT, although that's not a specific preparatory program.
Okay, one more, sorry. I'm going to keep you right there. Do we have any knowledge of how many of our seniors percentage-wise take the ACT again in terms of... So if we give it all to juniors, obviously, then who elects to take it as a senior to try to improve their score, that kind of thing? Well, at least let me rephrase. I hope they're trying to improve their score, right? So...
We certainly have that data available, honestly, off the top of my head that I cannot give it to. I will tell you that one of the conversations that we really are just preliminarily engaging in right now and haven't made any decisions on amongst the three high school principals and myself is about right time for the test for kids. So we know that we make purchase of a certain number of assessments, one per student, for example, and the conversation is really in the preliminary step of is the spring of the junior year the right time for each student, or do we look at their curricular course selections and then best choose when to give it? So although not a direct answer to that question, I can get that to you via a board report without any problem, just by looking at the report upstairs. I just don't have it with me.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You bet.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? We're on 9.01 through 9.34.
Yes.
I wanted to ask Dr. Gates. I was looking at that particular contract on Allegiant, and it had the hourly rates. Do we have an estimate of what we would spend annually for this vendor?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but we can get that. They are the service provider under contract, and they also did a lot of work this year as we did the phone upgrades that the board approved at two different times this year.
Thank you. And the other question I have, we have the architectural services item, and since we elected not to talk about the board priorities, the architectural services item is pretty well tied to what we were thinking on board priority. I think it was one, I may be mistaken, it could have been two.
Board priority two.
Thank you.
Yes.
Could you give me some?
Well, in order for us to be shovel-ready with a potential bond issue in April 2020, what we wanted to do is at least preliminarily identify those architects that will be doing the work to begin at some point, once we identify the projects, some conceptual work.
I don't have a problem with that because I support moving forward with a bond package, and I don't know where our discussion's going to go with the work session. I just want to make sure, and Mr. Hatley may have reviewed that contract, if we have need to end the contract, if we decide we're not moving forward, or what other... You know, there's a range of options that we might have to entertain. I'm just kind of...
Sure, and I think that's why they gave us hourly billable rates, so if, in the event that we don't proceed, you know, we would only be responsible for what we've, the costs we've incurred.
All right, Board Member Fritchie?
Yes, I just wanted to point out that, as you can see, there are lots of items on this consent agenda. Thirty, what, 32 of those, that most of those run through our purchasing, or anything over $5,000 actually has to run through our purchasing and distribution system, and that is a lot of work. That is an extreme amount of contracts for a monthly group of contracts for us to approve, but that often happens at this meeting during the year. So I just wanted to say kudos to our Christopher Taglia and her crew at purchasing and distribution. Thank you so much for your hard work.
And they get all new software out of this to do purchasing and RFPs, so there you go.
Awesome. No other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Great. Item for decision, 10.01 through 10.03. Do I get a, can I get a motion?
I move that the board approve to contract with Kelly Educational Services for temporary staffing services as outlined in the bid 2019-35.
Okay, any... I need a second. Thank you. Any discussion?
I've had a couple of patrons, and this doesn't affect my vote here, but I think we want to take a look at our daily rates and what we're offering. I'm understanding that it may be 20% lower than what substitutes can earn in other districts, so we might want to take a look at that. And, you know, just some of those kind of related factors, and one person shared with me that, you know, this is kind of part of our compensation, you know, package for various positions, even though it is for a temporary nature, and they weren't involved in the conversation on Team Lee Summit. So that may be something we want to look at in having a voice there.
All right. There's no other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
I'm abstaining from this vote.
And so am I. So we are down to 10.02.
I move that the Board of Education approve the attached new curriculum and curriculum revisions.
Second. Such eager beavers here. All right, any discussion on 10.02?
I don't know about Kim, but I think probably why we seconded that so quickly together was that I can at least speak for myself, and I'm not speaking for Kim. I know the hard work that goes in and the amount... I know the hard work that goes in, and the amount of hours that staff goes into when there is a curricular revision or adding curriculum opportunities for our students. So it's not just a paper and pencil thing real quick. It is a lot of deep, deep study to look at that, so. Kudos to all those teachers and people who spend the hours to update and change curriculum.
I second what he said.
All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. We have a personnel report. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening. Human Resources presents the personnel report for your consideration and approval this evening.
I move to approve the personnel transactions as presented and contracts issued.
Second. Second. All right, do we have any discussion? Board Member Murdock?
Sorry. One of the things, and I should be perfectly upfront with everyone, it's a long list of personnel, obviously, this month, and so I probably needed to pay a little bit more attention, but I was curious with the boundary changes and stuff, how many teachers did, had to move buildings? Do we know as a result of those? And I know that's going to catch you off guard, because I didn't, and I should have done better at that. So... Sorry, Dr. Del Sim.
Let's see. Total this school year, our seven, and, you know, this, the credit of this goes to not only our board approving these personnel contracts, but really to our administrators. They do a fantastic job, not only recruiting our staff, but the interview process, and then making those recommendations to Human Resources. So we have approved, you guys have approved 97 new teachers to our buildings to work with our kids this school year. Seventeen of those are teacher transfers, and then 18 paraprofessionals and five administrators for the upcoming 19, 20 school year.
I'm going to even ask them... Yeah, it does, it does. I'm going to ask...
You're going to ask more.
I am, I'm going to ask the more specific question.
You bet.
How many of the teacher transfers were voluntary?
They're all voluntary.
They're all voluntary? No one was voluntold?
No.
No. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions?
Quick comment, and that is, there was, there were a lot of unsung heroes in getting those boundary changes completed, and a lot of teachers and educators and principals that did quite a bit of work that was never seen. So I think as a board, we really need to say thank you to all of those that went way over and above.
Agreed. All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Great. We go down to our written reports.
Thank you.
Thank you. 12.01. Does anybody have any questions? We had three written reports. We're all... Board Member Murdock?
Sorry. Is Quasi or Rich here tonight for the Aquatics Center?
Mr. Prior?
Hi there. Thank you for being here. First off, I appreciate it. I know that there has been some questions regarding the Aquatics Center that board members have received. Can you kind of give us an update on what some of those discussions have been and where those, some of those discussions might be headed? In terms of Aquatics Center fees versus some of the KC surge and stuff like that?
So the fee structure is going to be what it is. We did a cost analysis across the area, and we're right in line with what everybody else is doing in our area. So the fee structure is going to stay where it's at. As far as the program, the KC surge program, we started the program last year. It's a, it's a level-up program to our program model that we have already. So we run a fundamental-based learn-to-swim program, and then we have a conditioning program that transitions into a bunch of recreation stuff. And then the surge KC program is just the top of the triangle where we're going to transition kids into that program. It's not a very high-level program. It's a more affordable program for our students, so that we can provide opportunities for our students. So they do have a choice. Right now, they don't really have a choice in the market, just some of these teams are very expensive, so that's why we created it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Quasi? Thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions on the other two written reports? If none, then our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.